Seeing none, we're voting by hands tonight. All those in favor. So you have the opportunity to wrap up. There is a timer right here in this corner. You'll be able to see where you are on your time. So you'll have your own cues. I would also like to remind you that any delegate or substitute spokesperson for a delegate is expected to refrain from the use of abusive language or from making any derogatory statement concerning the character or performance of named individuals, including students, staff, citizens, or trustees of the Halton District School Board. Any delegate who violates this section during their presentation shall be ruled out of order by the Chair or Vice Chair and may be asked to discontinue their presentation. And I don't believe that we have any other business to discuss. I would like to invite our first delegation up, which Fiona Willhauer. The topic is the Pearson Cooperative Nursery School.
Oh, yeah.
Get yourself together. So when you're ready.
Just when we're ready.
Did you have any documentation other than what you may have sent for trustees?
I do have some pictures and I forwarded the delegation to... Did you forward it on last, my delegation? Yeah. I sent it to you.
We'll ask trustee Pathen to send it out.
Yeah, we can do.
Okay, so when you're ready, please go ahead.
I'm Fiona Willhauer, the supervisor of Pearson Community Cooperative Nursery School. Our school has been proudly located in Leicesterby Pearson since it opened in 1977. Many of you have heard from us throughout this process in meetings, visits to our school, and written documents you've received. We're here tonight to ask some important questions that have yet to be answered. Our first concern is regarding the agreement between the City of Burlington and the School Board. The community space where the nursery school is located, as well as the third gym, a double gym is typical for a school Pearson size, was built cooperatively with capital investments from both the City of Burlington and the School Board. The community had input into the use of the space, and the Integrated Community School Partnership initiated Pearson Cooperative Nursery School. Our nursery school has a longstanding partnership with the City of Burlington, not the School Board for our space. The city paid for, in part, of the community room and the expanded size of the gym, for which the city has an operating agreement with the School Board that hasn't expired. How can that agreement be broken for the strategic purposes of the School Board? And why should the city and taxpayers allow for this to happen? While we're on the subject of this agreement, we'd like to address the issue of rent paid for this space, which has come up multiple times in comments from School Board staff. We're not getting away with not paying rent. The agreement for the community space that our nursery school occupies gives the city, not the School Board, authority to establish the use, policy, regulations, and scheduling of the community space. Despite what some may have been led to believe, it is not for the Board to charge us rent or a user fee. The city has acknowledged this. The spirit of this agreement was to have a community space that was used by and benefited the community, which it has for 40 years. The location of the nursery school within Pearson is ideal for a true community school. The central location with its big, bright windows looking out on the meticulously maintained playground and forest beyond is a rare find in the city, where many young children's programs are housed in basements and overlooking parking lots and busy streets. Our children need nature and the outdoors, which is a key part of the program at Pearson. Our youngest learners need to be respected with a space that is designed for them, like our nursery school with its tiny toilets and low counters, not gathered like an afterthought in an unused room in a building designed for other purposes. Should the nursery school children be collateral damage for this closure? Shouldn't their needs be considered the same as the high school students? The availability of funding for a potential new space, the timing, and whether we would actually fit the criteria is a major question. Any funding for new preschool space would be provided to meet only the minimum requirements from the ministry. A new classroom would shrink to half our current size, and our playground would be diminished by over 50%. We also estimate the cost of our move to be over $22,000. In addition, over the past 10 years, we have spent $71,000 on capital improvements to our space. Would we be reimbursed for the spending that we would be forced to leave behind? The financial implications of a move could cripple our nonprofit organization. This concern has been brushed aside, stating that there would be funding available. Relocation is not a simple solution, and as a small organization run by a board of volunteer parents, we cannot count on an undefined source of funding, nor can we afford moving and the remuneration costs. If our worst fears should come to pass and we are forced out of Pearson and unable to afford relocation, that would result in five people becoming unemployed because of a strategic, unnecessary decision by the Board. This is not just about us. The nursery school students and families are not the only beneficiaries from our organization. Alicia Gibson, the cooperative teacher at Pearson, said, "Having access that is readily available for students to be able to see the development of children during their fundamental years is something that is not only unique for students at Pearson, but instrumental in making the connections between the curriculum and the real world." This practical component has helped the students enjoy and experience success in the classroom. Choosing to close Leicesterby Pearson High School would have lasting and irreversible consequences that will impact many families. It will force a financially sound, thriving, nonprofit nursery school with deep roots in the community to close its doors after 40 years.
You're at 30 seconds.
A decision to close Pearson would impact students aged 2 and 1/2 to 18. Pearson High School needs to remain open so our staff, families, and high school students can continue to work together for another 40 years, allowing children to grow, play, and learn. Please make the right choice.
Thank you very much for your delegation. This is an opportunity for trustees to have a five-minute question period at the end of each delegation. Are there any questions or comments or points of clarification from trustees tonight? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Fiona. We really appreciate you coming in tonight and your perspective. Thank you. Our next delegation, I'd like to welcome Carla Marshall. Who is representing Autism Ontario, the Halton Chapter. And if you could introduce your documents. When you're ready.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Carla Marshall, and I'm representing Autism Ontario, the Halton Chapter, this evening. Thank you for allowing me to delegate on behalf of Autism Ontario. I would like to speak to you tonight about the potential disruption to our students with autism. Need to be more coordinated here. Autism Ontario's mission is to ensure that each individual with autism is provided the means to achieve quality of life as a respected member of society. The Halton Chapter supports this mission through local programming and advocacy. This quote is from our annual report, and this is what the Halton Chapter volunteers live and breathe. "We work with Halton District School Board to make sure that our students are in the right environment so they can thrive. Closing Robert Bateman High School threatens that carefully created environment." Students with autism often show restricted, repetitive patterns of behavior, interests, and activities, so our students need the right space to learn, a space that considers size, space, and arrangements of the physical and visual elements. This has been done at Robert Bateman to maximize student learning for those with autism. It's more than the classroom. Our students need calming spaces and sensory rooms. When a student with autism becomes overwhelmed, they need a space where they can go to deal with the overstimulation. Our students need the understanding of the staff and other students who interact and work with them. Transitions are extremely challenging for our students, and a change in this environment can take weeks, months, or longer to overcome, and for focus and learning to begin again. Robert Bateman High School is the only high school in Burlington designed and equipped to offer students on the autism spectrum the educational support they need. Other Burlington high schools do not, and they don't have the space to start over. So I ask you, why reinvent the wheel? Why spend money to move students who don't do well with change to a different school when an excellent environment already exists at Robert Bateman? Autism Spectrum Disorder, oops, sorry. Oh, that is right. Is just that. A spectrum, and each of our students have different needs and abilities. Many struggle in some areas and excel in others. Flexibility and options must be built into the IEPs for our students in a regular classroom setting or in CPP to maximize individual learning potential. Familiarity and routine is critical for our students to be able to learn, participate, and be included in school and community activities. This often requires accommodations to ensure they are fully able to participate. A student with autism will often flow between Essentials Applied and potentially academic courses, depending on their abilities. The diverse program at Robert Bateman allows our students to enjoy the support from all these streams while given the opportunity to learn to their full potential. I'm going to skip ahead so Zoe has a chance to talk, but I have provided this presentation so you can read about belonging and about making sure our students are included, about consistency in learning, and in ensuring that we don't throw up new barriers. This is Zoe. You want to read your thing, sweetie?
Hello. Thank you for having me. I am going into grade nine at Robert Bateman High School in September. I'm excited to go to Robert Bateman High School because my friends from all over Burlington will be there too. I like to bake, cook, do hair, and swim. I want to go to Robert Bateman because they have large kitchens where I can learn to cook and bake like a chef. I might want to have my own bakery or cupcake store when I grow up, and I can start to learn how to do this in the big kitchens at Bateman. I also like to style hair. I'm excited to see Mrs. Brush to learn what it is like to be a hairstylist for actors and models. I think her name is Cool. I love to swim. I practice and go to swim meets with the Burlington Special Olympic Swim Team. I am... I am going to join the Robert Bateman High School Swim Team. I have autism. I also worry a lot. I need to go to Robert Bateman School. I need to stay there. Please don't make me move after only two years. It will take me a year to get used to Bateman, and then I will waste another year trying to adjust to another new school if I have to move. Change is hard for me and my friends with autism. I want to go to Robert Bateman High School, and I want to stay there until I am ready to graduate. Please keep my school, my friends' school. Please keep Robert Bateman High School open. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Carla and Zoe, for your presentation tonight. Is there any comments or questions from trustees? Trustee caller.
Yes, I'm curious. The Board plans to have a transition plan for students. Don't you think that the students would be okay with a support like this in place?
One of the really big challenges with students with autism is that change is so hard for them, and a lot of the parents' concerns has to do with the fact that a lot of students with autism also have other diagnoses that they're dealing with. So, for example, a parent just spoke to me tonight in the lobby about her concerns about trying to figure out how her student with autism, Asperger's actually, so highly intelligent, so also in the gifted program, how all that is going to work. So very, very highly concerned about losing that integration that Robert Bateman has become so well-known for. The other thing that has been brought to our attention is a lot of these students were affected by previous moves, basically. So in order to get them into the right program, the right life skills, some of these students have already moved four times in order to get to high school. So we're looking at asking, getting them to Robert Bateman, and then asking them to move again. As Zoe said, it will probably take her all of grade nine to adjust and really kind of hit her stride at Bateman, and then she'll be there for a year and maybe hopefully have some solid learning, and then she'll have to move again, and then that year will be an adjustment year, and then she'll have another year. So basically, she'll spend four years in high school and maybe have two years of progress. And she is actually a pretty good student, and she's pretty good with change. She actually goes with the flow very, very well, especially for someone with autism.
Follow-up?
Thank you. I'm curious, do many of the students that your association supports go to school to age 21 and not just the four regular years?
Absolutely. Again, it's a spectrum, so some of the students are very academic and may not need that extra time, but a lot of them do need the extra time because they're dealing with social skills, they're dealing with anxiety, they might be dealing with other diagnoses such as learning disabilities, or ADHD, or MID. So it tends to be a very broad range. I mean, at the end of the day, they're people, so like all of us, they're individuals, and they have very unique learning styles, very unique communication styles, challenges with social skills, and again, that transition. They do so well in an environment that is safe and is predictable and that they know what to expect. When they know what to expect, these students with autism are so intelligent and so creative, and they do so, so well in the right environment that I know staff has spent years crafting and honing at Robert Bateman. So to see it disappear is heartbreaking.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There's time, if anyone else has a question or comment? Seeing none. I'd like to thank you very much, Carla and Zoe, for coming out tonight and your delegation and your perspective. Thank you for coming. So our next delegation is Sharon, David, and Kimberly Pickin? Oh, okay. Sharon Pickin, regarding self-contained programs at Robert Bateman High School. Just so everyone knows who's waiting, and you sure as well, there's water and cups there if you feel the need.
I haven't got time for that.
Or at the end, when you're leaving. Anyways, well, thank you for coming, and when you're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to delegate this evening. My name is Sharon Pickin, and I'm a mother of two, Kimberly and David. Both my kids have attended Robert Bateman. Kimberly has graduated, and David is in grade 12. I've been advocating for my children for over 20 years. I fought to make sure that they get the education they need and that they deserve, and I'm here today continuing that fight for them and for other students whose parents are simply too exhausted from their own fights to be here today. My daughter Kimberly started in Essentials Placement at Bateman and moved in taking applied courses. She's finished her ECE diploma at Mohawk College. My son David started in Life Skills Placement and then progressed into Essentials Placement. I'm very proud to say that he is just about to complete an Ontario Youth Apprenticeship Program in Culinary Arts. My children found success at Bateman. Having the flexibility and the support to move between pathways allowed them to gain confidence and to grow as students and as people. This is why I feel so passionate about keeping Bateman open. I know the impact that this had on my own kids' lives. In fact, my daughter Kimberly says it saved hers. I am the Chair of the Parent Council of Robert Bateman, and in that role served on the Par Committee. During the seven meetings of the committee, there was little to no understanding of special education needs of students in the self-contained placement at Bateman. This lack of understanding is also known in the Director's recommendation when he describes self-contained placement as being for students in grades nine to 12. However, students are part of that placement until they are 21. The report also refers to this unique education experience as a program when it is by definition a placement. This is a very important difference because, as its name suggests, students are placed in placements. This is not an optional program that they can choose. As well in the Director's Report, grandfathering is offered to students in all programs except for those in Pearson and Bateman. Simply moving students from the Community Pathways Program to Nelson is different than what has been done in the past. When MMR began to offer CPP, students who were already attending those programs at Bateman were able to stay at Bateman and not forced to move. This was the same at Georgetown and UC jury. Moving high-needs students with no guarantee that they will have the same teachers or EAs is irresponsible and shows a lack of concern for their needs and their human rights. Having them have to change locations, teachers, and EAs increases the number of transitions that they will have to experience, and as a result, some of these students might not be able to complete their last year of high school. I was repeatedly told not to worry that transitions would be well-managed, but given the lack of understanding of special education students that I've seen exhibited as part of this process, I don't have a lot of faith in this happening. What you might not realize is that after Brock and Elgin became Bateman, the Board put in place a standardized curriculum, Carolina Curriculum and AFAC, for special education students. This is part of the Employability Skills Certificate and the Community Skills Certificate, which weren't there before. Moving them in the middle of these certificate programs can take away their ability to complete these. Please don't take away their chance of being successful in favor of students who don't need a seven-year placement. Nelson and Bateman are very different schools. Robert Bateman is already a competent school where students can move between programs. Bateman is already a school which promotes inclusion and diversity. Some Bateman parents are worried about their well-being and safety of their children if they are required to move to Nelson, especially those in the self-contained placement and the Essential students. The threats already being made about these kids on social media are frightening. We know that not all students at Nelson will make it difficult, but it only takes a few to affect equal access to programming and a safe learning environment. Our self-contained students deserve a safe school, or it takes away their respect and dignity. The way that Bateman operates today as a school which is inclusive and which meets the needs of students across a wide range of pathways is not something that can simply be recreated by picking up parts of programs and moving them around. Bateman is successful because it understands the needs of all students and has built a unique collaborative culture that supports these needs. It's important for you to know that students in the self-contained placement need more space than a regular classroom. They need a big room for 10 students and more for really high needs. These highly customized classrooms already exist at Robert Bateman. They do not need to be rebuilt for millions of dollars just down the road. And the idea that it's okay to move high-needs kids because it would save on transportation costs suggests that their needs are less important than students in other pathways. I hope that you, as trustees, will take into consideration that there are students at Robert Bateman that are different from students at any other high school in South Burlington, and that these students deserve special consideration. I hope that you will recognize that their rights as students are extremely important. I have fought for years in support of all students who are part of the self-contained placement of Robert Bateman because I know not everyone cares or understands about these students' needs and rights. My request to you is that you will all understand and vote to keep Robert Bateman open.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Okay, I'm still learning. Thank you very much, Sharon. Is there any questions from trustees? Trustee caller.
You mentioned the curriculum and the ESC and CSC certificates that these students earn, and the ability of the students to be successful if they're moved. Could you please explain why you think this might happen?
In the recommendation, you have students moving in their seventh year, no matter what year you move them, and there is always be someone having to transition over in their seventh year. This will affect the ability for many of the students to finish their certificates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming in tonight. Appreciate your delegation and your perspective. Thank you. I'd like to invite Casey Cosgrove up, representing Nelson High School. Welcome, Casey.
Thank you.
When you're ready.
Thank you all for the opportunity to come and speak. I have a tremendous respect for the challenge that's ahead of you, all of you. So, in a bit of a different circumstance, coming here to represent Nelson, not being one of the schools that was recommended for closure by the Director, but because the process still has all schools that were named on the table, it was important to come and share some of our thoughts about Nelson. I'm a father of three. I have one son that just graduated Bateman, or sorry, graduated Nelson, one that's there, and I have a daughter that's on the way. I'm a Bateman grad, a Lord Elgin grad. I worked at General Brock. I'm a lifelong South Burlington resident. My wife's family are all Central people. My mother-in-law and her mother worked at Central as teachers. So I'm representing Nelson today, but I feel strongly about the need to look at closing those schools as well, which I'll talk about a little bit later. I teach leadership at the University of Guelph, and I did a lot of the community development work over the years. That was my expertise. I'm a hockey and baseball coach at Nelson as well, so involved a lot in athletics there. I've seen, I think over my time, I've seen five or six schools close, Elizabeth Gardens, Brecken, General Brock, Laurie Smith, Strathcona. We have closed schools in South Burlington. It concerns me. I think the link to the city's strategic plan to me isn't that strong in terms of the ebbs and flows of population data and things like that, I think, need to be looked at a little bit more closely. This process has forced us... I'm extremely proud of the Nelson community who hasn't looked left or right pointing, saying, "Close them." It's been incredible. We started a Facebook page. Within a few days, we had 3,500 people on that page, and it was shocking to me how far and wide the impact of being a Nelson grad is. We support all the schools, but in terms of Nelson, I think that it evoked sort of emotions and words like tradition, pride, spirit. There's a history there, legacy, reputation, culture. The impact goes well beyond. The impact of being a Nelson grad goes well beyond their experience in high school. Again, I teach at university. I see a lot of the grads there. The school in terms of academic, artistic, and athletic excellence, I don't need to really go on about that. I think that we can't apologize for promoting excellence, and I think Nelson really has been a school that's been a shining example of being the kind of school that people are proud to be. And as a Burlington resident, I think Nelson is a very solid school. I said before that in terms of closing those schools, I think that we'd all like to see that happen. I know the challenge you have ahead, but my concern is around time. As someone who did community development work, it seems that any of us who are still on the table haven't had a lot of time to really go back and get creative. As someone who teaches leadership, I think that the... Again, I go back to the timeframe, but as someone that teaches... but as someone that teaches leadership, I think we have, as you can see behind you, the delegates, and you'll see them on Thursday, Wednesday as well, Thursday. We have incredible people in the community who may have ideas. I'm not sure that's been tapped into, whether we feel Nelson is safe or not. I think that...
You have 30 seconds.
There may be opportunities to get more creative and dig deeper, no matter who's on the closure list or who isn't. I do think that the potential of leaders in the community hasn't been tapped. Once a school is gone, it's gone. We've seen too many paved over. And if at the end of the process, all said and done, if a school closes and Nelson is going to receive students from other places, if that's the case, then we'll accept them with open arms and open doors, and hopefully that door that we open isn't a door of a portable. I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Casey. Is there any questions or comments from any of the trustees? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming out tonight and your delegation and your perspective. We appreciate it. Our next delegation is Gary Scobie, who is a community member. Welcome, Gary. And when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, trustees, Director Miller, and board staff. I am a longtime Burlington resident. My wife and I raised our two daughters here, who now reside in other communities. I take an interest in important issues in my city, and the provincial funding for old and new schools and school closure policies are both troubling to me. I am here to advocate for Option 7B, no school closures. Parents have participated in a drawn-out process mandated by provincial policies that are unfortunately out of touch with community values and the true meaning of community consultation. The community that affected, that is affected is Burlington, but the fund, but the policies, the funding, and the decision-making are in regional hands, your hands, as trustees of the Halton Board of Education. What should be a community decision for Berlin, within Burlington on funding for new school construction and old school rehabilitation and placement and displacement of students within Burlington High Schools are not in the hands of Burlington trustees alone, as they should be. When dealing with urban high schools, control over the future of the schools and their students should be made within the municipality directly affected. This non-local control is the first flaw in the province's policies. The second flaw is the methodology of the PAR process. In a community that already has surplus student spaces, constructing a new school that drains old schools of students, then uses this to justify old school closures, creates two classes of neighborhoods, those newer neighborhoods favored with new schools versus older neighborhoods disfavored with threatened school closures. This methodology creates an adversarial atmosphere even before the PAR Committee first meets, with parents having to defend their school against closure while sometimes having to advocate for another school to close in order to make their case. Starting out with a long list of closure options, but just one recommended option means the playing field is not level right from the beginning. It took a number of meetings, but the PAR members finally understood near the end that they were not fighting each other for the right to keep their own school open. Rather, they were fighting a process introduced with incomplete and inaccurate data that changed more than once and a process that was designed to divide and conquer rather than proceed with logical and reasonable discussion leading to consensus. That is how Option 7B, no closures, got back on the list. The parent representatives decided they would play the province's game, but only up to a certain point. I applaud their ability to come to this conclusion as a group under very difficult and stressful circumstances. Now, Director Miller has made a recommendation to close two high schools, Pearson and Bateman, and essentially move their students to the nearest continuing school and specialized programs to schools with current surplus spaces. Adjustment of school catchment areas is also being recommended. This recommendation is actually logical, but only if, and it's a big if, the correct number of high schools in north Burlington, north of the QEW, is just two and the correct number is just three south of the QEW, both today and many decades into the future. Past estimates of student location into the future have not always been correct, so it is still questionable whether it is worth the risk of losing high school properties and facilities when it will likely be impossible to place...
You have 30 seconds left.
...new facilities back into the existing neighborhoods if the estimates are wrong and the demographic projections correct, incorrect. I believe that you, the trustees, understand the politics of what you are being asked to vote on, and you are aware of how funding works, how it doesn't work, how the process is deeply flawed. You are in a difficult but pivotal process for a position to put students first. I ask you to vote for Option 7B and retain all schools and send a clear message to the province that they need to fix their system. Thank you, and I welcome any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out, Gary, for your presentation and your perspective. It's appreciated.
Thank you.
Our next delegation is Paul Brophy, who's also a community leader. Welcome, Paul.
Yeah, that's just a copy of my presentation. You can have after the presentation.
Thank you very much for bringing it.
Thank you very much for having me. My presentation will touch on the overall PAR provincial guidelines, then make some observations on the report, and close with a few personal reflections about Central. As a Senior Development Officer with the Ministry of Training Colleges and Universities, my work is about trying to support projects that would help students all over Burlington to have access to opportunity. I helped create apprenticesearch.com with the Halton Industry Education Council and worked for years with Kathy Mills and her team at the Center for Skills Development, creating initiatives for youth to get engaged in experiential learning pathways. I was privileged to be involved with these innovative arms of the Halton District School Board that made a difference in the lives of youth and students in Halton. The overarching goal of many of the projects was aimed at building community capacity to deal with community challenges. The guidelines of the PAR process that the Ministry of Education designed are quite the opposite. It was not a community capacity-building exercise. It instead became a community division-building process. By having to identify schools for closure before any real in-depth research and analysis had been done, the process was doomed to create community division. With all this said, this is where we find ourselves now. A report's been produced, and I'll make some observations and comments. Issues that stood out for me before the report was released included geography, busing, and walkability. The proximity of schools had to be a key factor in informing the path forward. The geographical sense in gutting a centrally-located high school never passed the visual nor the smell test for me. However, I see the creation of two composite schools at Nelson and MM as a geographical enhancement that will increase school location balance in Burlington. Two state-of-the-art, purpose-built renovations will be undertaken that would provide special ed and essential skills program delivery in south and north Burlington. The transportation issue is directly connected. The school's bus system is currently provided to Burlington students is considered completely unreliable by large numbers of students and parents throughout the city. To have considered a school closure that would dramatically increase the need for kids to use the bus system forever was troubling, specifically when kids currently using the service are so abysmally served. These factors connect to many other student-centered issues such as health, safety, access to extracurriculars, and academic well-being. For me, these were and are key decision factors. As the PAR process, at the beginning, Director Miller and a number of trustees said the initial Option 19 was indeed not a done deal. It was based on the data and information available at the time. As the Board gathered more accurate evidence-based data and in-depth analysis, a new recommendation evolved. The report describes a recommended path forward that has a lot of moving parts. However, in my estimation, the report provides a phased-in implementation plan that includes transitional grandparenting where and when most required. The report takes a prudent approach to population growth in the core of the city. Capacity to accommodate future growth from intensification is available at Central under this option. On a personal note, I'm honored every year to present the Rita and Tom Toby Excellence in French Award to a graduating student at Central in memory of my mom and stepfather. I present this award with pride each year. In doing so, I've been very impressed by both the profound impact the award has had on a number of the nominees and the genuine quality the students have displayed over the years. I've come to realize this genuine quality did not just happen. It was created and nurtured in large measure by the BCHS experience. There's a certain vibe at Central, a certain multi-generational pride in that school. When you can have a combo of a world-class robotics program and an award-winning theater program that thrive together in the same school, that's something truly unique and special. When I read in The Post that Mr. Radway from Central had taken a delegation of students to Vimy Ridge in April to celebrate the 100th anniversary, I was so proud and impressed by those students. My daughter once said that she didn't necessarily know everyone at Central, however, she knew of everyone. In kid speak, this meant they all had one another's back. Nice to know when you're a high school kid, a genuinely inclusive school indeed. In closing, I want to acknowledge that all schools in Burlington are indeed special. I began this presentation by ridiculing the provincial PAR guidelines that have in fact misguided rather than guided much of this process. I want to circle back and state clearly that I take no joy if any schools close in Burlington. That is why I went to Queens Park twice to rallies to express my disagreement with the PAR guidelines. However, regardless of the provincial PAR guideline deficiencies, trustees are obligated to find a way forward in Burlington that enhances overall student academic programming choice and addresses the on-the-ground enrollment issues that triggered the PAR in the first place. I believe the recommendations in the report give you a framework to do just that. Thanks for listening to my comments. He's on time.
Thank you very much, Paul. Is there any comments or questions from any of the trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out tonight and your delegation and perspective.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'd like to invite Denise and Matthew Nassav up to speak about diversity and inclusion at Robert Bateman High School.
Thank you.
And when you're ready.
Thank you. I have stood before you many times as an advocate for students with special education needs, but today I'm here as a mom with two children at Robert Bateman High School. I have been told that numbers and statistics go a lot further to the motion, so I'll try to give you some numbers. Five, the number of schools my son has been in before, has been in during his education career. He's in grade eight in the LEAK program, so if you do your math, that's a new school every two years. Here's another number, 75%. 75% of the students in the special education programming and placements at Robert Bateman have been in more than three schools in their high school edu, in their school education. Sorry, I don't know why I'm so nervous right now. These students have been shuffled around the school board like their needs are not important. When my son entered Bateman, it came with a relief and a weight off my shoulders because we would have five years of stability. My son is on the autism spectrum, and this five years of stability is gold to us. We felt, and the bonus was that his brother would also be at Bateman in the IB program.
Hello, Board members. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to speak with you. My name is Matthew Nassav. I am a student at Robert Bateman High School. I'm in grade nine at the pre-IB, in the pre-IB program. Closing this school would have detrimental effects on the community, the students, and the IB program in Burlington. First of all, by closing Bateman, you would lose a lot of IB students. After a survey that was conducted by a couple of our students, about 40% of pre-IB students in grade nine have said that they would just drop out of the IB program and go somewhere else. These other options include St. Thomas Aquinas High School, the IB program in Oakville, the Advanced Placement Program in Assumption High School, or going into academic stream. Also, moving the IB program raises some questions. Considering Central isn't AODA-approved and there's no elevator, this would discourage them, this would discourage people who are physically disabled from coming to the IB program. So, what would they do if they wanted, you know, go off to university in an international place? Secondly, what happens if Central doesn't get approved to house the IB program? Where would you move it then? The recommendation does not include a backup plan to this issue. The number, secondly, by closing Bateman, you would put both Nelson and MM Robinson over capacity. The number of students that would go from Bateman to Nelson would be enormous. This would put Nelson over capacity because most of the students in the academic and applied stream would move there. This means there would be two schools over capacity as opposed to just the one. Also, most CPP students would rather just go to one school as opposed to just transitioning between two, which means you'd move a lot of those students over there, therefore having three schools over capacity. Is this solving the problem or creating a larger one that will need to be addressed in the future? Thank you.
Over the past few years, millions of dollars have been put into Bateman to create an awesome learning environment for all students. It stated clearly in the report to attempt to recreate these facilities would cost $12 million. So, let's run some simple numbers. I did an analysis of the operating AODA and the recreational costs in three scenarios. If you closed Central, the five-year cost would be $9 million. If you closed Nelson, it would be $11 million, and if you closed Bateman, it would be $23 million. As a taxpayer, this doesn't make sense. Why are we paying twice the money when the facilities already exist? Now, you probably think enrollment is low. You're right. You guys caused it. Bateman only has half a feeder school. So, how are, with the way that the population is turning over in South Burlington, we expect that to change. Then I also heard Nelson's only 1.9 kilometers away. Have you seen the tweets and the threats that are coming out to the Bateman students? The use of the R-word that is happening to threaten these students? How can we in good conscience move our students to that toxic environment? My son moved to a school where he wasn't wanted, and it was the worst transition and the worst experience we've ever had. His self-esteem, his dignity, and his ability to learn was totally put in the toilet. So, I'm not, how can I as a parent in good conscience move my child to a school where I'm running that risk again? Bateman is the most inclusive, diverse experience we've ever had. My children with very diverse needs are getting exactly what they need at this school. We are creating some of the most fantastic leaders at this school because they're learning. An IB student is learning beside a CPP student. The other argument is that Central...
You have 30 seconds.
...is more central. I did the math. It's not. They're pretty much the same. So, I have the sheets for you to see, but in terms of which one is more central, they are the same. There isn't, Central is not more central to all of Burlington. The recommendation doesn't solve the problem. It doesn't improve any program equity at Aldershot. It puts the gifted program at risk. You have two under-capacity and three over-capacity. You spent a year studying the viability of French immersion. Don't our vulnerable students deserve at least that much study?
Thank you very much, Denise and Matthew, for your presentation. Are there any comments or questions from trustees? Trustee Collier?
You said you'd be sharing the map, those maps with us?
Yes, giving the maps out. I mapped it out, did the calculation from every corner of Burlington to show where Central is versus where Bateman is right now. And realistically, in terms of the IB program, most of those students come out of the north at the moment.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Trustee Reynolds?
Thank you. Could you also provide us with the numbers of the source documents that you've quoted from, please?
I absolutely can. I can send it to you. These documents are all yours.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, I would like to thank you very much for coming out tonight, both of you, Denise and Matthew, and your delegation and your perspectives. I would like to invite our next delegation up, which is Jody Carrera, Shelley Wetlawfer, Loretta Chin, Colleen Allen, and Tracy Kunsley, representing Dr. Frank J. Hayden Secondary Welcome, ladies, and when you're ready. Do you need, do you have a presentation you'd like online? Do you need, do you have a presentation you'd like online? Thank you. When you're ready.
Good evening, trustees, Director, Board Staff, and fellow members of the public. We are grateful for the opportunity to have our voices heard and we'll keep this presentation as short as we can. We live in the Orchard and Sheldon Creek communities. Our children attend John William Boych and Frank J. Hayden. We are parents to children in the English and French immersion programs as well as children with identified exceptionalities, including autism, anxiety, and learning disabilities. We are here tonight to express our support specifically for the recommendation that keeps all the English track students from the Orchard community together at Hayden. It would be disappointing to see the French immersion leave Hayden, given that all three of our Orchard feeder schools are dual-track. We agree, however, that the over-capacity at Hayden must be addressed and French immersion is an optional program. We very much appreciate the recommendation to grandfather the existing French immersion students at Hayden. We feel that this specific recommendation was an equitable resolution for our community. Currently on the Board website, there is this statement. "As part of the planning for the new Alton and Orchard communities in the mid-1990s, the Board had always envisioned a secondary school to accommodate students generated from these new areas. Given elementary schools that were built, enrollment projections indicated that there was a sufficient number of students that could justify a new school to service northeast Burlington. Additionally, in Report Number 08134 dated October 9, 2008, it was said that a northeast Burlington secondary school will allow the grade-eight cohorts from SRA 101 to attend secondary school in a similar manner to all secondary urban students in Halton. It is important to us that the majority of our students are kept together at Hayden and that our community not be split into three schools. It was always the intent of HDSB to provide a secondary school for the Alton and Orchard communities, recognizing that Sheldon Creek is very much a part of the Orchard as it has been part of the John William Boych catchment. As you can see, Hayden is by far the closest school to our community, being only 2.3 kilometers from our current elementary school, with other schools ranging from 5.8 to 7.6 kilometers away. We feel very strongly that the Board needs to follow through on the original stated purpose for Hayden. We have heard the argument more than once over the past few months that since some of the Hayden students are bussed, they can simply be bussed elsewhere. That is simply not the case. It is a short distance, but our children are bussed more for safety issues because of Dundas since there is no sidewalk on Dundas between Appleby and Sutton. We have an existing convenient city bus route that allows our children further independence. This bus route was specifically added by the city to offer an alternative route to school. As we all know, there is a shortage of bus drivers and our student experience overcrowded and frequently late buses on a weekly basis. Sending our students to a school outside of our community where they are dependent on bus transportation will create an even worse situation. As it stands currently, our children are already sitting three to a seat on the bus and sometimes on the floor to sit on the school to and from school. Additionally, this situation where our children are dependent on board transportation will make it difficult, if not impossible, for them to participate in extracurricular activities. As we all know, participating in extracurricular activities is an essential part of the high school experience and we want our students to have the same opportunities as their peers in other Burlington high schools. Francois Poulin did a study initiated in 2001 involving 390 students that were assessed annually until 2011, five years after finishing high school, that showed that extracurricular involvement in high school is associated with a higher probability of attending university. We felt validated and that our concerns were heard with the recommendation that all of our Orchard English track students remain within the Hayden boundaries. We respectfully request your support in approving this specific recommendation. Thank you."
Thank you very much. Is there any comments or questions from trustees? Go ahead, Trustee Collard.
Thank you for your delegation. I appreciate your recognition of the fact that families in the French immersion program are not as happy as you might be with this recommendation, but I just wanted to thank you for understanding that keeping the English program together while it is the mandated program and French immersion being an optional program is a good point and I thank you for making that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight, for your delegation and your perspective.
Thank you.
It's appreciated. I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Adam Doring, who is a community member. Welcome, Adam.
Thank you. I feel lonely up here also.
So when you're ready.
Director Miller, trustees, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I reviewed Director Miller's recommendation to the Board from April 20th and I want to say that I was very pleased with the recommendation in regards to the impact on transportation and cost savings to the Board and thereby the community as well. The current recommendation focuses on creating thriving schools in both the north end and south end of the community with the benefit of enhanced programs. This is a great opportunity for all of Burlington. The recommendation creates natural catchment areas that do not rely on excessive bussing or future boundary changes. From the beginning of the PAR process, I'd been concerned with bussing issues as well as the risk for potential increase of bussing problems once any PAR recommendation was implemented. I'm pleased to see that the current recommendation to the Board is conscious of this, especially when compared to the initial recommendation that began the PAR process last year. We all know the issues of bussing in terms of the lack of drivers, environmental concerns, adding to traffic congestion, and finally depriving students of the physical and mental benefits of a walkable environment. Beyond those points and being that I'm a person whose career is in finance, I believe it's always important to look at the money too. I also believe in a few simple rules and I have to admit I wrote this before I knew I'd be sitting down, but I believe in standing up, speaking up, and then very quickly shutting up. So I'm going to summarize my thoughts in two points and say thank you. Point number one is in regards to the current recommendation before the trustees versus the initial option that began the PAR. The starting PAR option from the Director would have bussed or added approximately 900 students out of the core area of Burlington, a very large number, especially when currently almost all of these students walk. When I heard this last year, the finance guy in me couldn't help but do some quick napkin math on bussing that amount of extra students. Information from the Board suggests that the cost to bus a student is approximately $650 a year. That amount multiplied by 900 students with a 3% inflation rate gave me a present value of $14 million. The finance guy in me says that's a lot of money. And when compared to the starting recommendation last year, the current recommendation this Board saves this $14 million expense in bussing. This is not only good progress but common sense and the PAR committee worked well on this one. Point number two is concerning the recommendation to provide for two composite schools, one in the north part of the city, which would be MM, and one in the south, which would be Nelson. Students will spend less time on a bus and have access to a broad range of programming close to their home. I did not bother with the napkin math in this one, but given the numbers and special programming, I can confidently say this arrangement would add to the potential savings of $14 million in bussing. I think it's important to remember that the PAR process was always an exercise into looking what's best for our students and our community. Any decisions behind us are part of the past and in the PAR, we look to the future. From a transportation perspective, the current recommendation makes good financial sense and most importantly, makes the greatest number of students across Burlington benefit from enhanced facilities and opportunities for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Adam. Is there any comments or questions from trustees? Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. I noticed you handed something there. Was that, does that speak to your numbers?
Yeah, just a few bullet points, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any comments, other comments or questions? Seeing none, I would like to thank you very much for coming out, Adam. We appreciate your delegation.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome our next delegate, Michael. And you're going to have to probably correct me. Hariblan?
Hariblan.
Hariblan. From Burlington Central High School. Go ahead.
We'll do it. Okay, yeah, good evening. My name's Mike Hariblan and I'm sure you recognize the name from a number of the updates I provided to the trustees regarding the Central Robotics Program. And I'd like to just say good evening to the trustees, Director Miller, and school board staff. I'd first of all like to compliment the board staff on what I believe is quite a good report. It's factual, concise, and covers all major concerns and issues identified throughout the PAR process. I've been actively involved in studying the PAR since October as a parent of a high school student, longtime Burlington resident and citizen and former Burlington High School student myself. I've read most of the background information, attended all the information sessions, open houses, and park meetings. I'm also very much aware that many factors, that there are many factors to make a decision as significant, controversial, and as sensitive as school closures. I'm here to offer my opinion on how I see programming improving in the long term with the Director's recommendation as I present this information and would like trustees to remember two numbers. The first is 30. The changes we are here talking about making will very likely impact students for the next 30 years. The second number is 5,500. That's the number of students that are enrolled in our high schools each year. Throughout the PAR process, the school board has placed great emphasis on programming and the need to provide all students in Burlington with an equitable opportunity for pathway and course selection. In simple terms, the way I see the challenge around programming is that with too few students in any school, there are two, there are fewer sections and consequently greater potential for course conflict. So just that we are all grounded. A high school that may offer four sections in grade nine English, two in the first semester and two in the second semester. The number of sections in any school are bound by the minimum and maximum number of practical students and the total number of students wanting to are required to take that course. Throughout the park meetings, I heard the question asked several times, how do we quantify if one option is better than another from a programming perspective? So I thought to myself, what if we track the movement of students from one school to another for various options that are being evaluated by the park, looking at both of the students at the receiving schools and the students transitioning to that school, then assessing if those students will see a net benefit or decline in overall programming? There's certainly many nuances associated with this such as the IB program, gifted, community pathways, and so on. So let me share with you my analysis of the Director's recommendation, 23E. In that table I've given you, there are seven tables in there, each which represents the seven high schools in relative geographic location across the city. In each of those tables, I've looked at the English program, French immersion, SC sped, et cetera, with the data gathered from the Board's documents. And to simplify it, just looked at enrollments in the current year, 2021, 2026. So I had five and 10-year increments. So what did I see? Moving the FI program from Hayden resolves overcrowding. A strong FI program is established at MM. MM becomes one of the two composite schools in Burlington offering a full range of programs, supporting students with special needs. In the south, the situation at Aldershot is neutral, which I'll get to. Programming at Central improves due to boundary expansion and addition of the IB program. Programming at option, programming for Nelson students and Bateman students transitioning to Nelson also improves. The utilization for Nelson shows 122% based on current OTG, but this will reduce once the new facilities are constructed at Nelson for those students transitioning from Bateman. I would note that this also provides an excellent opportunity to construct purpose-built classrooms at Nelson that will be the pride of the school and the community for many years to come. No doubt, the situation at Aldershot is a challenging one given the size and geography of that catchment area. The Director's report clearly recognized that the solution to Aldershot was not robbing Peter to pay Paul, or in other words, moving Central students to Aldershot. Aldershot, I think, provides an ideal opportunity to test and implement some innovative ideas included in the Director's report. I think the Board is correct that there will be greater uptake of the IB program at Central as it is more accessible from a transportation perspective. If you look at the SIPs, you will see that the current IB program at Bateman-
You have 30 seconds.
A high proportion of those students that access the program live in the east end of Burlington. I also like the idea of the gifted program being moved to the north and south, which makes it more accessible. So when I look at the Director's report in this way, I believe it provides the best overall balance from a programming perspective for the next 30 years and for the 5,500 students that are enrolled in our high schools each year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike, for your presentation. Is there any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight for your delegation and perspective. All right, I'd like to invite Carolyn Whiskin up, representing Burlington Central and the ESL program. Welcome, Carolyn.
Thank you. One chair better than another.
When you're ready.
Okay. Director Miller, trustees, board staff, and guests. My name is Carolyn Whiskin. I am a parent of two students that attended Burlington Central. I'm a past co-chair of Parent Council and I work in downtown Burlington at a place where we employ Burlington Central students. I think we can all acknowledge that there are vulnerable students at all of Halton High Schools, but tonight I'm here to represent vulnerable students at Burlington Central and those are the 117 students in our ESL program, of which over 50% are refugees. These students have witnessed some very horrific events. Many of them have seen family members killed. So when they come to our school feeling included, feeling welcomed when you know no one, you don't speak the language, and you have lived in fear, is very important. When I came to Central, it was actually the head of the Guidance Department, I should say Student Services, who told me that Central was very special in having this program because it didn't just accept these students, it actually embraced them. And I wondered what that meant. Through my experiences at the school and talking to these students, I have come to understand what that means. And I want to share that voice with you because these students do not have several delegations representing them. Their parents not speaking English well themselves are unable to delegate on their behalf. There is no organization delegating on their behalf. I am it. I am their voice. So some of these students come from Syria, from Afghanistan, Egypt, China, the Philippines, to name a few. So listening to some of these statements I want to share with you, I felt welcome and that I belonged from the first day I arrived. Everyone smiles at you in the hallway, makes you feel that you matter. We all have friends who aren't in the ESL program and they really want to understand who we are. We can wear what we want and feel accepted. We can sit anywhere we want in the cafeteria amongst the other students. The teachers are like parents. The teachers tell us how to be people in Canada. I wondered, what did that mean? Well, it means not just the educational piece, but how to fill out a form to get your driver's license, how to actually prepare a resume, how to do an interview, how to speak. I think what a lot of people don't understand is the ESL program has been at Central for over 20 years. We have 10 ESL teachers at the school. We have the only school in Halton that actually has courses, our core courses designed for these English language learners. And on top of that, we offer courses beyond the core courses such as geography, history, science, et cetera, that are also geared to those students. Those are media studies and food and nutrition courses and musical theater. And it's amazing how these students go beyond that to actually participate in extracurriculars. Students on the volleyball team who are on the baseball team who help out with our breakfast program, which serves close to 100 students a day, helping to make breakfast for others, the book club, to name a few. But these experiences that our students have, I want to say one that they really feel so valued is the Cultural Carnival. We used to call that Fusion Fest and now they've renamed that. But the beauty of that program, it happens one night every year. The students parade down the aisle with all their country flags and they share their talents musically, theatrically. There is a fashion show and afterwards, the students and their parents actually prepare food from their culture and everyone partakes in that. It's amazing. The auditorium is packed with lots of students. And I spoke to one of the Chinese students who actually sang a ballad and he was quiet and I said, how did you do that? And he said, I'm so shy, but the non-ESL students actually gave me the confidence. They told me I could do it and I really wanted to share my culture with them and I did it. The whole audience was just applauding. The whole audience was just applauding. He was so proud of himself. But the fact that a student, it's nervous and, you know, nerve-wracking for many of us to get up in front of people, but to be a new student in the country and stand up in front of a whole auditorium of people meant he trusted them. He trusted that they had that confidence in him. And I think that speaks to what we talk about embracing and community. One student mentioned to me that his marks, he went to another high school, they went down a little bit at Central. I said, well, how did that happen? He said, because now I have confidence to take harder courses. I'm really going to be successful. That impressed me. I think what we've got here is students who have gone out and they've worked. They work in the community. I've seen them at Tim Hortons. They are getting those jobs. They can walk to them. They don't have to pay for busing to get to those jobs. They can walk from the school to where I see them at Tim Hortons working, or at restaurants downtown, at the grocery store. They are succeeding and thriving. And I think about this community, low-income students, with all these things they can walk to, including their school. We have subsidized housing, as you know, downtown, and it makes me just feel like we have embraced them outside the school and inside those walls. And I want to encourage you to preserve this legacy for our students, not just this one hundred and seventeen, but for the years to come, to make this a place where they can learn, excel, feel included and welcomed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. We appreciate your presentation. Are there any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight and sharing your perspective.
Thank you very much. I've left a report to circulate.
Thank you. I'd like to invite our next delegation up, Lisa Bull and Brian Depoe, speaking to Robert Bateman High School tech programs.
He's, he's cuter.
Sorry, whenever you're ready.
Except I can't see the timer. Okay, you got the gist. It's my kid. He's really cute.
Why don't you put it here so they can see it?
You can put it in front of the TV. That's fine.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Bull, and like many of you, I am a mother and a fierce advocate for my child. Tonight, I'm urging you to vote against closing Robert Bateman and to direct Director Miller to consider one or several of the alternative solutions that you'll hear about from me and others as part of these delegations. The director's report in front of us now dismissively suggests that the new locations for the Schisms and OYAPs currently located at Bateman are to be determined, as though they're just another course you could take online or pick up along the way, as though moving these programs and putting them in the hands of new teachers would be without consequence. The director couldn't be more wrong. These programs change the course of students' lives, and it's the availability of these programs alongside of the essentials and applied programming, which create opportunities for success, both personal and academic, efficacy, and happiness for students who might not otherwise experience such success. They shouldn't be treated as afterthoughts. To me, this is just of the lack of understanding that Director Miller and his staff have about the interconnectedness of programming at Robert Bateman. Let me explain. My son, who you've seen, is seventeen years old in grade eleven at Bateman. Hunter is an amazing young man. He's bright, he's curious, he's funny, and he lives with profound learning disabilities. When we moved to Burlington almost five years ago, we were told by our neighborhood school, which was Central, that they simply couldn't provide him with the support that he needed to be successful. I left that meeting in tears as this was not the first time we'd heard this message. By that time, Hunter had been in four different schools. Unfortunately, none of those schools had been able to provide him with the support he needed, which meant up until that point, he'd never really experienced success or happiness at school. And then we found Robert Bateman. Because of Bateman's ability to offer all of the education pathways, Hunter has been able to move from an essentials math course in support of his learning disabilities to applied English and history, and more recently into an OYAP in auto body. This unique set of programs anchored for Hunter by the skilled trades offering at Bateman have allowed him to experience success like grades in the eighties, a career path via the OYAP, and most importantly, satisfaction, happiness, and a sense of belonging. While my son will graduate next year, I strongly believe that Bateman needs to stay open so that other students can experience the same kind of success that he can. So how can we make that happen? Research tells us that in Canada's future economy, the skilled trades are going to matter more than ever. For example, Canada is investing thirty-five billion dollars into infrastructure projects across the country. One estimate is that within ten years, Canada could face a shortage of a quarter million individuals in construction trades alone. As well, a diversifying energy landscape is going to create an intensified demand for skilled labor. Google, for example, is building floating data centers on barges, which will require underwater welders, electricians, and HVAC technicians. The bottom line? I believe that an expansion of the skilled trades program at Bateman, the creation of a center of excellence would increase enrollment and utilization, and would allow Bateman to continue to offer an exceptional educational experience for students of all abilities. We believe that there are opportunities to partner with industry organizations in construction and welding, and to expand existing partnerships with the automotive industry that you'll learn more about later tonight. As you remember from your tour, I hope the infrastructure for these programs is in place at Bateman now. There is no need to recreate, or rebuild, or spend millions of dollars. So why wasn't a solution like this offered by Director Miller in his recommendations? As you may know, I was a member of the PAR committee, and like many of my colleagues on that committee, I struggle to understand the singular focus on school closures as a solution to this board's utilization challenges. One of the values laid out in your multi-layered plan is innovation, but I've yet to see or hear any meaningful examples of innovative solutions to the issues facing Burlington's high schools. We should be looking at school closures as an absolute last resort, as a plan to fall back on when all other options have been fully explored. Holding one meeting a year for a small number of community organizations and then suggesting that the board has tried to be collaborative and tried to be creative is, in my humble opinion, not even the bare minimum. As a vice president in a multinational organization of over five thousand people, honestly, I would lose my job if I delivered these results as an example of hard work and innovation. There are lots of examples across many boards across the country who have shown innovation.
You have thirty seconds.
In two thousand and two, parents in Olds Alberta refused to settle for a mere renovation of their school. Instead, they entered a joint venture with the local college to create a community learning campus, an idea which came from the conviction of their leaders that they could do more together. I am convinced that with your leadership, with your collective will, and with the support of a highly engaged community, we too can develop innovative solutions in Burlington. I believe that it's our responsibility as adults to model for our children creative problem-solving, to teach students that as the world around us rapidly changes, we must tackle those changes with creativity, innovation, and a willingness to test the untested. Think electric cars, online newspapers-
Thank you, Lisa.
...and data centers. Thank you very much for your time.
I'd like to thank you for your delegation. Are there any comments from trustees or questions? Seeing none, I would like to thank you for coming out tonight and sharing your perspective. Okay, I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Leah Sudi, representing Lester B. Pearson High School. Welcome, Leah.
Thank you.
And when you're ready.
I'm getting over a cold, so please excuse me if I need to take a break. That won't interfere with my time if I need to take a sip of water. So I appreciate your, your assistance with that. So thank you, Chair and Trustees, for the opportunity to delegate on the director's preliminary report. I'm going to address how this report directly affects both of my children in separate recommendations with a broader discussion of school community. As far as I can see in reading the report, the focus has been on efficiency and providing students with course offerings, range of subjects, and extracurricular activities. However, the report does not speak to effectiveness for student community and the direct relationship to student success. I believe you should not split the gifted cohort and that you should keep Lester B. Pearson open, and here is why. Firstly, I'm going to focus on my youngest son, who currently attends Charles R. Bowdoin and the gifted program. As you are aware, the report suggests the establishment of the two composite schools. Within this report are repeated references to keeping cohorts together, sometimes going so far as to keep French immersion and English streams together from an elementary school to send them to the same high school, except in the instance of the gifted cohort. These students, the report recommends, should be split to those that live north, north of the highway and those that live south, splitting their cohort of peers and dividing their school based on geography. This cohort of students, some of whom have been together since grade one, total approximately one classroom of students. Currently, there are thirty-three in grade nine, forty-seven in grade seven, twenty-three in grade six, and thirty-five in grade five. This community of cohort of students require specialized teachers that already exist at Nelson. The program has existed there for years, and the cohort has gone to Nelson together for years. This has enabled them to maintain their established relationships, communicate and develop friendships, and feel comfortable and safe in their environment with peers who understand their way of thinking. You also need to have enough of them to provide the program choice and flexibility in course selection. This is both efficient and effective for this community of students. But when you speak of a school community, it is also inclusive to those elective teachers, guidance counselors, support staff, the principal, the bandleader, the basketball coach, and the greater Nelson student community. It is a community within a school, and given their numbers, needs to stay that way. Based on the above, I therefore ask that you do not split the gifted cohort. Secondly, I want to focus on my older son, who currently attends Lester B. Pearson High School, and again speak to what I feel is missing in the report, which is the broader responsibility of educators and the education system to give complete experiences or the community of elements of schools. Quoting from school-size policies, meaning an environment that accounts for the best possible social behavior, student well-being, involvement in extracurricular activities, student attitudes, and the interpersonal relationship between students and the teachers outside the classroom. I've read fifteen separate articles in journal publications from the Credit Valley Hospital Library that resoundingly speak to the benefits of smaller versus mega schools on the academic and personal outcomes for students. Smaller schools provide students with a greater sense of community and connectedness. They also are associated with higher academic achievement, have better educational outcomes for students of all abilities, are better on most student behavior measures as they have, they enhance personalization as they are all well-known by all the adults. There's a greater sense of connection and community because everyone knows your name. They enable enhanced relationships between teachers and students, provide more interaction outside the classroom, make them better advisors and mentors, and within the classroom, teachers can respond to the individual needs of students. They have more rewarding experiences for the students. As they have more participation, as there is less competition, more become involved as they are needed for teams and clubs in order for them to be viable, they also promote a greater sense of personal responsibility for the students' own learning. They provide more opportunities for students to engage in leadership roles. Evidence of this at work or at LBP can be found in the responses to the student survey conducted as part of the PAR process and the Frazier Institute ranking for LBP, which in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen was the second highest for the public high schools in Burlington. The survey results speak of, I know most of the students in my grade where LBP was at eighty-nine percent, and the lowest at forty-nine was our most heavily populated high school in Burlington. My teachers know something about me. LBP seventy-four percent, again, the lowest, at fifty-six. An adult at the school that I can connect with-
You have thirty seconds.
-LBP seventy, lowest forty-eight. Now, I wanted to include my discussion of LBP by stating that it needs more students, ideally between six and seven hundred, and this would classify it as a smaller school, where the wonderful benefits I mentioned above would still exist, and these students could easily come from Hayden. As you know, schools north of the QE have a joint utilization of eighty-three percent going to eighty-eight in two thousand and twenty, with all three schools remaining open. Closed LBP, this jumps to one hundred and eleven, and in four years to one hundred and seventeen. And that does not include the numbers of the students coming from the Evergreen community, which is a estimated nine hundred residential units.
Thank you, Leah.
Can I have one sentence?
One sentence.
Okay. So in closing, I ask you that you do not split the gifted cohort and that you keep LBP open. Your decision impacts my children and many others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from trustees tonight? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight and your delegation and perspective.
Thank you.
I would like to invite Diana Bauer up, representing MM Robinson High School. Welcome, Diana and Dwight. When you're ready.
Okay. Hi, I'm here this evening on behalf of Maria and myself as parents and former PAR reps with great concern with this recommendation. We thank the trustees and the director for taking on this long overdue PAR in Burlington. Based on the recommendation on utilization rates, program delivery, and learning opportunities, we do not believe this recommendation provides student achievement through equal access to programming and learning for every student in Burlington, as stated in the report itself, nor fiscal responsibility and within the board's equity policy. Equal access. Equal access is not available for Central and Aldershot. Central at sixty-eight percent capacity, with very few students added to address the issue come grade eleven and twelve, which was the purpose for the PAR. Aldershot remains the same. PAR told magnet schools do not work, and as outlined in the report, under innovations, did not see a single option or slate of options that would address the two reasons the PAR was initiated. Central has sixty-three shared students, Aldershot seventy-eight, the highest in Burlington. This will affect their transportation because these students are transporting themselves between the two schools. Shared extracurriculars at Aldershot, thirty-eight percent, and Central, thirty-two percent of students have timetable conflicts. This is also part of the PAR where it will not, it will not be resolved by the recommendation. These schools will remain small and have high levels of conflict. Equal access will be available for students with special education needs in North Burlington. We support the composite school in the north as per recommendation and through the Life Skills Review that recommended that Essentials programming be where all self-contained placements are. We also support the Access Program remaining at MM Robinson. These are at-risk students who have the opportunity to transition into high school with students just like them, with two high school credits before grade nine. The success of this program is such that almost every student who remains in access at MMR graduates in grade twelve, and we believe this program should be available in every area of the board. With regards to fiscal responsibility, recreating already existing facilities at Bateman into Nelson, twelve million. AODA compliance for Central, three-point-two million, the highest in Burlington. Facility renewal for Central, eight million, without air conditioning. With regards to equity, the PAR heard presentations from facilities, business services, secondary programming, but nothing on special education, and the difference between a self-contained placement, one north and one south, and a regular class placement that is available in every school. This created ignorance. The procedure on self-contained placements is that the superintendent of Student Services is the only one able to move self-contained placements. This created the belief that students in the self-contained placement in the recommendation were to be treated with equity and not equality. The report does not recognize the difference between self-contained placements and a program, a seven-year program. With regards to socioeconomic, this population requires a greater need for transportation to enable their children to go to school. Sometimes it's whether you buy boots to walk or a loaf, a loaf of bread and milk for the table. With regards to the ELL, they need a catchment closer to home and recognition that there's ESL in other schools. Possible amendments to the recommendation? Amalgamate Central and Aldershot. It will provide equitable access and fiscal responsibility. Maintain the re-engagement program at MMR. It is only eight to ten students in a separate class, which will not provide any program viability to move it to Central. Maintain the Access Program at MMR and provide in every area of the board. And review the recommendation-
You have thirty seconds.
...through the equity policy and tool to ensure decision is made based on equity and not equality.
Thank you very much for your delegation. Is there any comments or questions for the presenter tonight? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out tonight and your delegation and- Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out tonight and your delegation and perspective. Just pull it out. I'd like to invite our next delegate up tonight, Amy De Souza. And if you'd like to introduce your son.
This is Matthew. He's grade nine at Lester B Pearson High School.
Welcome, Matthew. And Amy is representing, as you heard, Lester B Pearson.
As a parent of three young children, I wish to express my deepest concerns and disappointment regarding the potential closure of Lester B Pearson High School. I strongly believe that the drastic measure to close our school is very short-sighted. Lester B Pearson is ideally located in an area of population growth and demographic change. The issue with the eighteen hundred empty seats is the fact that these seats are not spread evenly across grade levels nor schools. With twelve hundred and sixty-seven of the empty pupil spaces located south of the Q E W, it makes a closure of any North school unwarranted and unjustified. Since the building of Hayden, our enrollment numbers have dropped considerably. The main reason being is that we currently have one and a half feeder schools while Hayden has seven and a large portion of our catchment is mainly industrial and commercial. Despite the close proximity to Pearson, many students are being redirected to other schools and require driving or busing, which doesn't make sense from a logical, geographical, nor financial perspective. This simply reinforces the need for balancing of feeder schools and redefining boundaries and not for the drastic measure of a school closure. The current lone moment at Pearson was created by the Halton District School Board and not the lack of growth in Burlington. Based on the most recent data from two thousand and sixteen Statistics Canada Census, the population in Burlington has increased by four point three percent since two thousand and eleven and is growing faster than the estimates currently being used by the school board. Should the time come when a new school is needed to satisfy the additional growth, more money and more land, which are both currently limited, would be required. There is a growing trend in Burlington with older residents remaining in their homes well past retirement. Demographic change is inevitable. With the completion of housing developments, which includes single-family dwellings within the North Burlington area, there will be a substantial increase in families moving to the immediate area. It is important that we as a city be proactive and plan for the future growth and change that will result from our current aging population downsizing. With three and four-bedroom homes nestled perfectly between both an elementary and high school, it makes Pearson and the Palmer area a highly sought-after community for new and growing families. Built in nineteen seventy-six, Pearson is the second newest public high school in Burlington. It offers expansive grounds, tennis courts, running track, a beautiful trail, and forestry that provides a unique learning environment and recreational area for many residents to enjoy year-round. Despite the current enrollment and the rumors of a potential closure, there is still a good percentage of students choosing to attend Pearson through optional attendance. Pearson was built as a small school and has consistently proven to be a successful platform for providing academic excellence and student success. According to Fraser Institute, Pearson ranks second-best public high school within the city of Burlington. Research has shown that many students tend to perform much better and suffer from less stress and anxiety in a small school environment. With bullying issues a growing concern, many students and parents are seeking out small schools where fighting and bullying are less likely to occur due to having a lower population. The small school environment not only enables students to be more visible to their teachers, it also helps makes it easier for teachers and staff to respond should a confrontation between students arise. The smaller school environment improves the student-teacher relationship, making it easier to identify students' need for support and provide a personalized educational experience. Having a smaller staff side also makes it much easier and faster to collaborate in order to provide student support when needed. As per the student survey conducted by the school board, seventy percent of Lester B Pearson students answered yes to having an adult at the school they could connect with, such as a guidance counselor, a teacher, and an educational assistant. Pearson ranks the highest amongst all schools surveyed while Hayden ranked the lowest at forty-eight percent. In comparison to the larger school environment, students in smaller schools feel more connected to their school and their community as a whole. In addition, seventy-four percent of Pearson students participate in extracurricular activities and team sports, ranking second highest next to Aldershot at seventy-nine percent, with Hayden again ranking the lowest at sixty-seven percent. This once again supports the fact that although they may not have as many teams, there's a greater chance of making the team and the result of less competition. Being part of a team is known to build student self-esteem, strengthen social skills, and build strong and positive relationships with their peers. Overall, small schools tend to be safer, offer a more positive learning environment, and results in higher academic performance amongst students, especially those with social, emotional, and academic challenges. According to the Mental Health Association, approximately five percent of male and twelve percent female ages twelve to nineteen have experienced a major depressive episode. In two thousand and thirteen, Child Obesity Foundation reported forty-two million infants and children overweight worldwide. Seventy million children will be overweight or obese by two thousand and twenty-five. With a growing concern relating to our youth's mental health, well-being, and childhood obesity, perhaps the Halton School Board should consider focusing their efforts on exploring creative alternative programming, advocating for small schools, promoting walkability, lowering the needs and costs associated with busing, strengthening school-based community partnerships, and not closing schools in Burlington.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Is there any questions or comments from trustees for our presenters tonight? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you and Matthew for coming out in your delegation and perspective. I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Kristin Priestner regarding Nelson High School. Welcome, Kristin.
Thank you.
When you're ready.
I would like to thank the school board and its trustees for giving parents a chance to voice their thoughts this evening. I also want to thank all the delegates who have spoken from their hearts tonight. As parents, we all want what is best for our children. And every school in South Burlington provides something distinctive for their students. I am part of a multi-generational family that has attended Nelson over the years. My husband and myself, our siblings, our nieces and nephews, and now two of our children. Nelson provided me with a supportive environment for a female in sport and enrichment classes, which led to a strong sense of self-confidence and pride in my accomplishments, ultimately guiding me to a career in education. I began teaching phys ed and coaching in a brand-new school in Mississauga twenty-two years ago. And throughout these years, I've been striving to give back to my students what I myself experienced at Nelson. And quite frankly, and sadly, I have failed on so many levels. It has proven virtually impossible to grow the school culture experienced at Nelson in another school in one generation. There has been something special going on at Nelson over the years that is difficult to put into words and that you won't find written down in a board report. It is not the building that makes Nelson a magnet destination for families throughout our city, although the partnership with the city to maintain the stadium, renovate the track this spring, and beautify its ball diamonds does provide well-used community facilities. It is the innate sense of belonging that is found in the hearts of its students, staff, and community. All one needs to do to witness this intangible spirit is to drive down New Street on a fall Friday afternoon. It is readily visible that school pride and spirit go hand-in-hand with community support. From the students sporting their pride of school colors to the sub-shop on the corner that's been serving the team lunch on game day for years, to the grandparents filling the stands, and to the new families with toddlers in their wagons venturing in to see what exactly is going on under the floodlights, one can simply stand in awe of the sheer sight of community coming together. And family is what it takes in this age of rising mental health issues and anxiety in teens. The more eyes we have on our kids, the better. Nelson is so blessed that there's a very large number of alumni that are able to stay in the neighborhood and have their own children attend Nelson while their parents also still live in the community. My own mother was a chauffeur for my son's junior hockey teammates, doing pickups and drop-offs, bringing cookies or lunch, and she wasn't the only grandparent on duty. The reassurance I feel when my teens are out on a Friday night and I'm able to quickly text a friend and check in on what is going on is priceless and honestly, quite absent in most high school communities that do not have the ongoing tradition of families staying local. Earlier, I referenced that each of our schools offers students a distinct advantage. I wouldn't want to see any of the skills and trade courses offered at Bateman lost in an age where I already feel strongly a majority of our students are underserviced. I fully agree with Lisa Bull's earlier comments about our province's need for apprenticeship and trade employees. I certainly wouldn't want to see Bateman close and force the transfer of a vulnerable sector of special needs students to a new environment. Gifted students are also special needs students one can easily forget. Nelson's gifted program is a huge part of the Nelson community. My daughter has taken advantage of gifted sections in math and science and is absolutely thriving in this environment. Nelson also serves an extracurricular cohort in an exemplary fashion. In education, we all strive to promote academics, but in reality, when it comes to university and scholarship applications, it takes a very well-rounded resume. Nelson has developed an award-winning music and drama program. Its visual arts and photography program are second to none. With its strong combination of academics and athletics, Nelson continues to provide opportunities for all athletes, boys and girls alike, such as those I experienced myself. Nelson's football program alone had ten students attain a scholarship to Canadian universities this year. This is absolutely unheard of of any other school in the province. Many families count on this financial help, as I'm hoping I will, to afford post-secondary education. This is also just one example where family, heart, and legacy play a role. My son is being coached by a Nelson grandfather, the father of my husband's best friend growing up, who also coached him when we were students at Nelson. The vast number of community members volunteering their time at Nelson in so many different areas renders me speechless. I have never seen it in any high school I have taught at. This just isn't the case. And like I have witnessed firsthand, you cannot replace this sense of family in one generation or replicate this culture overnight in another setting. To contemplate losing Nelson would be heartbreaking in the truest sense of the word. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your delegation. Is there any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you for coming tonight and your perspective. I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Carter Crechen from, uh, representing Robert Bateman High School. Welcome, Carter.
Hello.
When you're ready.
Hi. Before I begin, I would like to thank all of you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Carter Creken and I am a grade ten student who goes to Robert Bateman High School. I will be delegating on the costs related to closing Bateman. Robert Bateman is home to a whole range of special facilities. Bateman is a full-service school and only a portion of these facilities exist at other Burlington high schools. These special facilities bring a lot of special programming to the school. Let's talk about those facilities. First, we have our auto body program, which is the only one in the city. It has a painting booth that costs us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it would cost us seventy-five thousand dollars to move it. Kids have even come from Hamilton and Dundas just to learn in this room. There's already a shortage of fifty thousand auto body mechanics in Ontario and yet there's a great chance this unit will not be duplicated, duplicated at Nelson. This room has led many kids into successful careers and with the shortage of workers in this area, this is just irresponsible. The kitchen at Bateman provides a student-run serveri where students cook burgers, wedges, wraps, and other specialty dishes for lunchtime. Staff and students will go there to grab something to eat. What other school provides that kind of learning experience for their students? We have one large and one smaller chef training lab, three industrialized walk-in freezers that we cannot just simply move. These are all wasted dollars. The kids in this program once cooked for Chef Gordon Ramsay and Prince Charles. Community members used to eat in our student-run restaurant, Pangia. From what I was told, this facility cost the board seven point five million dollars. It truly is a state-of-the-art learning space. The kitchen was built for the previous merger. It is only thirteen years old. According to the recommendation, it would cost approximately four million dollars to replace and I'm pretty sure that does not include air conditioning. Our welding room slash machine room is another important part of the school. We recently upgraded a few pipes that are part of this room's ventilation system. That was fifty thousand right there. They welded them together so they will be of no use in a new facility. Five students can weld in the same time in that room in self-contained welding booths. These students even made some miniature Stanley cups for the NHL. The space has also provided room for two CNC machines. Special electrical requirements are needed to run those machines. We're talking about machines that would be using about a hundred amps of power. Standard circuits provide fifteen amps. Can the new building handle those power requirements? Bateman's utility bills are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than Nelson for a reason. Those costs are not going to be going anywhere. Next, we have the facilities that are community pathways, placement program uses. This area is fully integrated into Bateman. The facilities at Bateman are anything but institutionalized. One staff member once told me that she was amazed at how the CPP kids felt at Bateman. The kids in the placement feel welcome anywhere as they should in Bateman. The CPP students even run their own store. I always see students in there that are grabbing a drink, a cup of decaf coffee, or even some popcorn. Now for the area itself. We already have appropriate learning spaces for CPP students. There are several washrooms with showers and lifts and transfers for students to use. We recently had a three hundred thousand dollar renovation take place to update the facilities that are CPP kids use. The school's hallways are also quite large in width to accommodate for wheelchairs and bikes. They aren't constrained to a purpose-built wing or a section of the building that is accessible. Our cafeteria is something that is very special to me. We can run plenty of large events, performances. Some of the things that we can do at Bateman cannot be replicated at other schools. We had five hundred guests during one of Pineland's concerts. You can't do that with any of the other Burlington high school auditoriums. Bateman's significance doesn't just end there, however. Bateman is the cheapest building to bring up to AODA compliance at nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars. Central is the highest with three million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, one hundred and six for comparison. Robert Bateman and Pearson have air conditioning everywhere except the tech wings. Hayden is the only building with AC everywhere. Bateman and assuming Pearson too have had their ACs since their opening. As you can see in the picture, that's no small room for those air conditioning units and ventilation. Summer school is held at RBHS. Is the board really going to put students in a school in the middle of summer with no air conditioning? My first elementary school did not have any AC and that was, is brutal, to be honest with you. You can't learn in that kind of environment. Outfitting a school with AC like Nelson is no small feat and it is not cheap. When the board saved millions of dollars if they closed Nelson and moved those students to build to Bateman where the facilities and programs already exist, it would take ten of RBHS and Pearson being shut down to see any savings. At my elementary school, we had two unsupported labs and they needed to be replaced. We only got ten thousand dollars and that was the IT budget for the whole school for the year. Ten thousand dollars wasn't even enough to fully replace even one lab with new computers. We had two labs that had about twenty-five machines each. That one lab is still there today. Which, shouldn't we be, we shouldn't be wasting money trying to rebuild what we have when we don't even have enough money to replace the small things like those computers?
Thank you, Carter. Are there any comments or questions from trustees for our presenters tonight? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out in your delegation and your perspective.
Thanks.
All right, I'd like to invite our next delegation up, Jim Dunn representing Robert Bateman High School. Welcome, Jim.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm the parent of an elementary student in special education and a former CAC alternate member. I want to start by acknowledging that public institutions like school boards are in the unenviable position of having to make tough choices and closing schools is among the toughest. In making such choices, it's paramount that stakeholders have confidence in the integrity of the process by which decisions are made. Also want to start by acknowledging that parenting a special needs child has its challenges, to say the least, but it is also inspiring and immensely rewarding. I will say, however, it's laced with a pervasive pang of uncertainty about the future and particularly with the vulnerability of our children. The high-performing set of special education programs at Bateman give me a fleeting sense of certainty as I project into a highly uncertain future for my son. But the director's report gives me little confidence in the transition or the reproduction of these programs or in the reproduction of Bateman's unique school culture. There's four issues I want to discuss about the report. First, the report lacks transparency and confidence in the population projections. Uh, the projections can't possibly be based on the most recent twenty-sixteen census data on population age groups and dwelling types because these data were only released five days ago on May third. If two thousand and eleven census data were used and the report is silent about this, not only are these data out of date, but they've been thoroughly discredited as highly flawed because of non-response bias owing to the voluntary nature of the two thousand and eleven long-form census. At a minimum, the projection should be based on the most current and credible data and there should be a transparent, rigorous analysis with acknowledgement of uncertainty and explicit margins of error and how such data was interpreted. This is not present. I also want to address the financials, which on the face of it just don't add up. I won't repeat what other delegates, delegations have said. I won't repeat what other delegations have said, but I do want to emphasize that one of the things that's not yet been mentioned is that the Centennial Pool, which has attached to Bateman, was recently renovated at the city's expense for $3 million. And as a taxpayer, that's all the same money. It's all coming out of our pockets. The other point about financials is that the replacement of the facilities at Nelson are estimated to cost $2 million. And the report implies that the discontinuation of current programs may actually occur as a result of the arbitrarily-chosen $2 million budget estimate for such construction, something I find quite shocking. Ultimately, the report lacks a specific costed plan. It lacks timetables for replicating the facilities for the special education students and any kind of user input process or apparent due diligence. Third point I'd like to make is that the report has a surprisingly casual approach to the transition of special education students. Forty-seven percent of Bateman students, over 370 students, have IEPs, and there's only two students, or two sentences about moving these students that appear in the report. To me, these sentences basically say, "No big deal. We've done this before. Trust us." Many of these affected students will have significant emotional and behavioral disorders, making this transition difficult, and they will all undergo the transition simultaneously. I would be very, I would be very much like to see the evidence that this can be done successfully with that scale and all simultaneously. It's difficult to have confidence in this report without any semblance of a plan or details on the implementation. Finally, the fourth point is that the director's report fails to recognize the critical importance of school climate, which has already been alluded to by some of the other delegations for achieving equity inclusion of special education students. Such a climate is the result of years of careful cultivation over time, which involves regular, routinized interaction of diverse groups of students, reinforcement of attitudes, and principles of diversity and specific norms of behavior. As a parent, I've been able to see how the inclusive culture at Bateman begins actually with the relationship between Bateman and the Life Skills Program at Frontenac, the elementary school that backs onto the Bateman property. The Frontenac Life Skills students who are in grades four to eight are a common fixture in the halls of Bateman, usually visiting at least weekly to use Bateman's facilities. These routines are critical for the transition of these students from elementary to secondary school, and they further instill the culture of Bateman normalcy to the idea of exclusion. You might say it's a K-12 campus. Again, there's no confidence that we'll be able to replicate this. Ultimately, the director's recommendation and the foundation upon which it's based give me little confidence in the proposed course of action. The recommendations exacerbate the pervasive uncertainty parents like me have about the future of our children. I urge the board to reject the recommendation to close Bateman.
Thank you very much, Jim. Sorry, I'm going to get back to... Is there any comments or questions from trustees for our presenters tonight? I'd like to thank you very much for your delegation and coming in tonight with your perspective. Thank you. I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Erin Hossak.
Hossak, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Representing Robert Bateman High School.
Thank you for allowing me to speak at this delegation for Robert Bateman High School. My name is Erin Hossak, and I'm a former student at Robert Bateman. I graduated the school in 2012 and stayed for an extra semester as well as summer school in 2013. I'm currently in the concurrent education program at Brock University and will be entering the teachers' college portion in the fall. I'm here today to explain to you why Robert Bateman should not close. A former professor of mine that taught at Central High School as well as Brock University taught me to stand up for what I believe in. This delegation is in tribute to her as she recently passed. I grew up at Burl Oak and New Street and attended Mohawk Gardens and Pineland Public School for my elementary school years. During these years, I was very shy and did not have much to say unless it was to my family, where I never knew when to stop talking. While attending Pineland, I was bullied by a bunch of my classmates. It wasn't until I went to Bateman where I began to flourish in more than just my academics. At Robert Bateman, I have learned that diversity can make people flourish. Bateman has many diverse programs as well as people that make it such a unique school. I became friends with people from different pathways, such as IB, academic, applied, trade programs, and from the center. My old high school friend took the healthcare SHISM program, where she was able to be a certified personal support worker and make $18 an hour right out of high school. In this program, the students who were studying to become a PSW helped the students in the center with many different forms of disabilities. Not only does this program merge with the center, a program called Best Buddies, a program I was personally a part of, also interacts with students from the center in a social setting. By removing these programs from Bateman and by closing the school, both students in the center and out of the center will not be able to learn to coexist and interact with each other in the same way. In a world full of hatred and differences, shouldn't there be a school that teaches about love and acceptance? By having multiple programs within one building, students will be able to learn to interact with all walks of life, as we can see in the example I gave with the center and SHISM students. By integrating many types of programs and courses, I was able to find my passions that I did not know I had. I was able to take dance as an elective, a course where a girl in my class transferred from Nelson for. I was also able to take auto mechanics, where I have learned valuable life skills so do not have to stick my thumb up in the air on the side of the road waiting for a man to come to my rescue. I was also able to take a woodshop class, where I learned how to use tools to build things around my apartment. I can go out and buy tools, materials, and build something before my boyfriend comes home from work and has to do it for me. Bateman offers all of these programs plus more that allows your students to learn more than reading, writing, and arithmetic. By having a school that allowed me to find my passions and teach me valuable skills, I have succeeded in my post-secondary education at Brock University as well as my own personal life. As part of my program at Brock University, I had to follow a teacher for six hours this past year. I decided to go back to Bateman and follow a former teacher of mine. I was able to witness how the teacher interacted with grade-nine Essential and IB students. Both programs help guide students in a different way of learning than what is traditionally seen in either the academic or applied streams. I was able to see how this teacher integrates 21st-century literacy into the curriculum. As our society is constantly shifting at a rapid rate, students need to be able to adapt and be prepared for a world that is not yet created. At my placement, I was able to see the teacher use technology within the classroom as well as get the students to think critically and creatively. Within the Hall District School Board, the multi-year plan has accountability, creativity, empathy, integrity, equity, and collaboration listed as its core values, as you can see behind you. I was able to see all of these within Bateman this present school year. The same teacher I followed this year taught me when I was an RBHS student to use logical information in an argument. So for this delegation, I prepared and conducted research using Stats Canada, and I've spoken with parents who have been working to keep Bateman open. Looking at my research, I have found that moving the French immersion program that is housed at Nelson to Bateman could be a solution we have all been looking for. Many of the FI students at Nelson had originally come from Pineland Public School, which is within the Bateman-Catchman area. By doing this move, we could accomplish several things. First, students from the Pineland area would be within easy walking distance from Bateman. Second, with moving FI to Bateman, you would also increase the utilization at Bateman to between 68% to 74% over the next 10 years. Nelson's numbers will indeed decrease. However, they would still have between 799 and 901 students in the English programming stream, which is still more than enough students. By moving the FI to Bateman, Bateman would have very similar utilization numbers to Central High School as well as significantly higher numbers of students in English programming than Aldershot. Both of these schools, my mention, are not up for closure.
I have 30 seconds.
In closing, you can all see that I have a passion for the school and good education. In the multi-year plan that the HDSP has released, the plan mentions that the system will, quote, "provide and maintain facilities that are safe, accessible, and engaging learning environments," end quote. Within my delegation, you can see that RBHS has all of these qualities. So why close a school that has everything it needs to allow students to be successful, no matter their strengths or differences? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your delegation. Is there any comments or questions for our delegate tonight? Seeing that, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out, Erin, and sharing your perspectives with us. I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Shaznie Patharina, Patharana, sorry. So, Shaznie, if you'd like to introduce the other members with you, please.
For sure. My name is Shaznie Patharina, and this is Amy Barrington. This is my brother Kevin, and this is Olivia McGee, and this is my sister, Benokshi. Thank you. Good evening, trustees and Director Stuart Miller and school board staff and fellow community members. My name is Shaznie Patharina, and I'm a grade-12 student at Brownson Central High School.
Just as a disclosure, we're not trying to discard any schools. We're just highlighting the wonderful things at Central. Not only the facility, but the community that we have as our experience as Central students.
As a Student Senate member, we oversee all the student activities and events at Central, and just to name a few of the events that we have at Central. So this year, we recently started Cultural Carnival. So last, previous years, it was called Fusion Fest. And Cultural Carnival is a very diverse event where we have ESL students and non-ESL students, so like English students, working together to create like a marvelous event within the community. We had our Empathy Week Assembly previously last week. We host many biz kids and charity events within our school, and we've been doing that for a really long time. And it's amazing to see all these kids come up and create amazing charity events to support the community, and they do this all on their own with the help of the business teacher. We hold Sears plays and dodgeball tournaments. We have ball hockey tournaments and more.
The ESL students at Central are a multicultural group. Going to school with them in grade seven and eight, we could see them excelling, but not as much as they were and they do in high school. Because we have the program at Central, the ESL program, we can see them excel way more with the program, with the help of the teachers. They brighten your day, they come up to you, they talk to you, they feel more comfortable around you because of the program they have. Not only do the ESL students, have the ESL students thrived, but the non-ESL students have now found ways to help implement them into other events at the school. As for example, the prom committee has given all the ESL students free tickets to the prom so that they are included in that event.
Why is it important for us to have a school in our neighborhood and not be sent to bus into different communities? So, our school is a very walkable school, and we're continuing to add bike racks each year. So, last year, we had so many bike racks that students had to lock their bikes on the fence that we had around the school. So it was just, it was a lot of bike racks. So we implemented new bike racks within our school. The amount of hours students will be going on bus, on the bus to separate schools will be a lot. And it could affect their mental health and jobs. So a lot of students have after-school jobs, and for those jobs, they need to get to school, like get home, at a certain amount of time. So with later, with them being on buses, it'll allow them to be later, late.
Why is Central unique? First of all, the student and, the student and teacher relationships are really good at our school. Seeing that it's a small school, we can, we have a lot more personal relationships. We can ask them a lot more questions. Our classes are slightly smaller than other schools, and it just helps us thrive in different areas. We're also connected to the grade seven and eights, which you all understand that going to high school is a really big transition. Having the grade seven and eights in our school and transitioning from grade six to grade seven, it just helps us be more included in the school than in grade nine, when you know a lot of other changes are happening with our bodies and what have you. We have the arts, the SHISM department. I have a lot of friends in that group, like in that program. Thank you. And they have actually chosen to stay at Central after they finish their SHISM because they just like the environment at Central compared to the other schools. We are first place, we had a first-place robotics team winners. There's lots of things. We can walk to school. The location is great. That's just.
So, some of our history of Central. So, the current school building was constructed in 1922 and had been added to extensive over the years. The last major addition was made in 1965, which added a new technical wing and gymnasiums. And in 2012, the auditorium was upgraded with new seats and equipment, which was spearheaded by our very own tech teacher and business teacher, Mr. Todd.
You have 30 seconds.
And alumni, past, present teacher, Ms. Stewart. The school raised funds through community donations and fundraisers. Now the theater is a state-of-the-art facility. Overall, Brownson Central High School is a diverse and accepting and historical and walkable school. And we ask that you support the legacy of Brownson Central High School students.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much to all of you for your presentation. Is there any comments or questions for our presenters tonight? Seeing that, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out and your delegation and sharing your perspective about your school. Thank you. I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Mary Ann Anderson, regarding the International Baccalaureate Program. Welcome, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
When you're ready.
So, thank you to the trustees and board members for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you directly about the proposed school closures. I appreciate the time and energy that's been given to this important process. First, I'd like to provide you with a bit of background to help with context. My husband and I have lived in Halton Region for 18 years, most of which has been spent in the same neighborhood in Burlington. We've chosen to remain in the same catchment area as Frontenac Public School and Robert Bateman High School for the past 13 years because we love the neighborhood. At the heart of this community are the schools. Schools are the places where children spend most of their waking hours outside of the home, and the number of activities occurring at school after hours mean that we and many others can be found at a school. They are, after all, the hubs within our communities where our children generally feel safe and secure. I'm the parent of a student who will be graduating from Frontenac Public School and will be attending the pre-IB program at Robert Bateman in September. I have another child still in elementary school. Relocating the IB program to Central in 2019 will likely mean that my daughter has to leave the program due to logistics, and in her words, she feels as though she will be giving up a dream in the process. Like many children her age, they need some semblance of predictability. Uprooting the IB students from a familiar setting and separating them from friends at a critical time in their education will have effects that cannot possibly be measured. Make no mistake, this would drastically change the trajectory of success for some students. In a, in a time where more much-needed focus is being placed on mental health, this move can be detrimental to many. My daughter has been focused on IB as a program path since grade seven, and it's something we, as a family, support her in. She hopes to have a career in forensics, and she sees the way as a witch, sees this program as a way in which to enrich her learning experience and to participate in the community that is formed within the walls of Bateman. From what we understand, it's a unique environment. We should all strive to learn from it instead of dismantling it. If the IB program is relocated to Central, it would affect us personally and the student body it serves in the following ways. Firstly, my daughter will likely need to leave the program. Simply put, having to travel nine kilometers each way to school beginning in grade 11 is not manageable for us. Public transit will be expensive and time-consuming. Along with the increased travel times, it means that she can't necessarily stay after school for events. She likely won't be able to have a part-time job since she would be available fewer hours each weekday, nor can we rely upon her for help at home and with her younger sister. Most importantly of all, in the interest of our daughter's mental well-being, we will not remove her from where she's comfortable unless it's of her own volition. Secondly, the enriched programming offered by blending IB with different pathways of learning currently at Bateman would be lost. This current structure promotes inclusivity for all. I, for one, want to help raise a well-rounded and compassionate young adult. Lastly, there's no guarantee that re-establishing the program at a new location will be approved by the oversight body. If not approved, it would leave Burlington without an IB program altogether. So many students and community members have not been given the opportunity until recently to provide feedback or to explore alternatives that could prevent the closure of schools. Why not ask the IB students to study the issues and come up with some alternative plans to sustain the current number of high schools? Or the community in general? Surely, we can afford to delay potentially closing schools until we've exhausted all avenues to ensure that we're taking care of all students at all schools. If the decision is made to close schools, please understand we can never reopen them in the future. Despite enrollment predictions we've been given, I don't believe that the number of high school students will continue to decline in the long term. The rate at which people are leaving Toronto due to housing costs and the rate at which people are discovering this amazing region we live in means that many homes are turning over to young couples and young families. I can attest to this happening within the Bateman catchment area. Factoring cities' plans of intensification into the equation has to count for something as well. There is only so much land to build upon, and intensification is high on the city's priority list. Case in point, eighteen townhomes are being built close to our house on land that previously housed a small strip mall. Additionally, upcoming changes to French immersion program will have a dramatic impact, reducing the number of students who will graduate from Pyleland and French immersion, increasing English students in the Bateman catchment area. In summary, relocating the IB students and closing schools will introduce a new set of stressors into the equation. Dynamics will forever be altered, and there's no guarantee that those dynamics will change in a positive manner for all. To date, this exercise has served to create much animosity and division within the communities. Students, parents, and community members are already feeling the effects. The proposed changes may make sense from a monetary perspective in the short term, but ultimately, the message being sent to these children is that their comfort and well-being doesn't necessarily take precedence over money. Is this a risk you're willing to take? For these reasons, I recommend you do not support the short-sighted thinking in the director's report and that you vote against closing Robert Bateman High School. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mary Ann, for your delegation. Is there any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much for coming out tonight and your delegation and perspective. So delegation twenty-two has withdrawn. So we will proceed on to our next delegate, who is John Norris, representing Robert Bateman High School. Welcome, John. And if you could introduce your person with you, I'd appreciate it.
My guest this evening is Mark Milson.
Welcome, Mark. When you're ready.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to present. Just as a full disclosure, I am not a parent with a child in your system. And I don't even live in Burlington, frankly. But my name is John Norris, and I'm the executive director for the Hamilton District Auto Body Repair Association. Excuse me. That was our name when, many years ago, we started discussions with the Halton District School Board regarding a new school called Robert Bateman Secondary School. Now we are the Collision Industry Information Assistance Program across Ontario, and collision chair of the National Automotive Trades Association, and chair of the Canadian Automotive Service Information Standard, charged with maintaining shared data, including security codes between all the car companies in Canada and the non-dealer repair facilities in Canada. When Robert Bateman Secondary was opening, we discussed with the school staff, the board staff, the opportunities to have a special auto body collision repair, automotive paint program at Bateman. We arranged for a major car company in Canada to donate a spray booth to the Halton District Secondary School Board that would, in today's dollars, be well over a hundred thousand dollars with further costs for installation. In order to ensure that Robert Bateman Secondary students produce the best and were the finest skilled trades graduates, we also did this. We arranged to generate an air emissions permit for the Ministry of Environment, which is not easy to do for schools, frankly. We arranged for the best new product to be shown to students at Robert Bateman. We organized our industry training classes to be held at Robert Bateman School, and we invited the students to participate at no charge. We ensured our industry meetings were held at Bateman and that tours arranged and students invited from Bateman at no charge for our dinners to allow employers to see their shop at Bateman and better communicate with the students and talk about hiring opportunities. We modified the curriculum. We actually got permission from the Ministry of Education to remove your curriculum at the Halton District School Board and replace it with apprenticeship level one, which means that every student that went through Bateman would be one year ahead of everyone else in Canada. Lessons learned at Bateman were used to modify programs and increase attendance at other schools in Thames Valley and Essex County. We also helped sponsor students from Bateman to attend Ontario and Canada skills competitions, where Bateman students did very well. In fact, earning awards is the best in the country. Simply put, from an industry perspective, Robert Bateman Secondary has significant value for the industry and its new skilled students. I'm asking you to consider and reconsider the closure of the school and this program, or considering partitioning the skilled trades sector, because moving would dilute the program and its content. Robert Bateman Secondary has the advantage of being able to be the best in Canada, attracting students from Halton and as far away as the US border has done so in the past. International students and their fees would certainly help this issue. If you decide that Robert Bateman Secondary is to be closed and the equipment not used at another school of the same caliber, then we don't want to see that equipment located in industrial disposal site. Instead, we'd ask for our donated equipment back, please. I would also like to introduce Mark Milson. Mark is a former student and graduate of Robert Bateman Secondary School's auto body program.
Thank you, John. I'd just like to share my story and experience with the Halton District School Board. I initially was a student outside of this board. I was actually from the Hamilton Board. And the board didn't offer a skilled trades program that came comparable to what the Halton Board did. So I transferred boards just to come and participate in that program, not knowing where my future would lie. I was very successful to, or grateful, sorry, to experience, at that time, General Brock High School and then Robert Bateman High School, with some of the greatest teachers, in my opinion, in the country, as well as an amazing program that John just described. I achieved, as many classmates of mine achieved, great success at the skills competition. And I was very fortunate to represent our country in Helsinki, Finland in 2005. And doing that well in high school was an achievement in itself. The thing that I want to touch on today is the, and as a lot of other speakers had spoken about earlier today, is the shortage of skilled trades people in this industry. And this program is essential for not only local business, but also business provincial-wise.
You have thirty seconds.
Without programs such as this, youth not being exposed to the increasing technological advancements in cars is going to put them at a disadvantage entering the workforce. We are seeing autonomous vehicles and electric vehicles on the cars, on the road, sorry. And the only way for our students to have success is to encourage it, teach it at a young age, so that when they go into a workforce, number one, they're safe and they have a chance to succeed. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank you both for your delegation. Are there any comments or questions from trustees for our presenters? Trustee Oliver.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'm wondering if you could elaborate on the potential contraindications for moving the program to another school?
We have faced this situation in other school boards, particularly in Windsor and Hamilton. The promises made were rarely kept by their school boards. In the Hamilton program, frankly, all our donated equipment disappeared from locker rooms within the school. The board kept a program that they thought would be acceptable, and they used their exemption with the ministry to allow a non-licensed person to teach the course. Within twelve days, the class had evaporated, everyone had left. So our confidence with the school board programs is being limited. Moving some equipment, too, would be a trick. Thirty to forty thousand dollars to get that spray booth out of Bateman, and probably another ten thousand just for the permits required and the air emissions permits required. And we have no way of knowing what that's going to mean at another school, whether you'll go back to your old curriculum or whether you'll use the new curriculum that Ontario has now designed, frankly, to make sure that the students are getting a college-level program. I have to point out that huge difference, because every student that does that, and Bateman was the first in this country to do that, is well in advance of every other student. When they go to college, they skip their first year. They do not have to take first year. So it's a significant advantage for the students. I'm not sure that we'd see that on a transfer to a program or to another location. We have not seen any, I don't want to use the word competency, but any follow-through with the vision of having an established program that actually can be the best in the country. Because we're talking about a program that was the best and still is the best in Canada, at the, at the secondary school level. And there isn't another program from here to the border. And we can attract those students, just as we attract the student from Dundas. We can attract those students here and be able to do the things that we had a vision of before. And let's look at, how do we make that more technologically adept? Can we get the eighteen car companies in Canada to kick in equipment and have programs in there? It can be a center of excellence, I heard it mentioned before, but it can be to design programs and have award winners, the best in Canada, coming from that program.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you very much, both of you, for coming out tonight and your delegation and perspective.
Thank you. And I want to thank Mark personally for coming. Mark's the current manager of a Tesla repair facility.
I'd like to invite our next delegate up, Christine Hall, speaking about the International Baccalaureate Program. Do you want those handed out now? Do you want us to have them now?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Welcome, Christine, when you're ready.
Thank you. I'll be making reference to the IBO organization letter that's in the attachments that, that are being handed out. So one of the criteria for this review is that a reorganization at secondary schools in Burlington could enhance program delivery and learning opportunities by offering a greater range and choices to secondary students. I propose that this is not a zero-sum game, that we do not accept having some win and some lose as a result of this organization. Unfortunately, I believe the director's recommendation, as it exists, does serve up those who win and those who lose. Specifically, I believe that students who are currently enrolled in the IB program at Bateman will have their program delivery diminished, not enhanced. Should the program be moved to Central? I'd like to highlight the risks and negative impacts associated with the report's recommendation to move the program. For the upcoming school year, there's been a forty-three percent increase in enrollment for pre-IB, seventy-three registered, and five more in the application process. The director's report impacts the current grade-nine students, of which there are fifty most significantly, as they would be moved to a new school for their grade-twelve IB year. The IB organization has requirements to move a program from a closing school. I'd like to draw your attention to the risks associated with items six and seven. Number six, regarding teachers. In an email from the board, I was informed that the process for movement of teachers affected by closure is, quote, "not yet defined." Once a decision is made to close schools and move programs, then discussions will occur with the secondary teacher union about the process. Unfortunately, we cannot be more definitive at this time. I'm very concerned with the vagueness within the director's report and within this response. We know the teacher's contract and the region's landscape will be factors influencing a transition plan. Without a final decision, we cannot know what issues will impact or prevent Bateman's current IB teachers from moving. While I don't support a move of the program to Central, if it did happen, it is critical that the Bateman IB teachers, a minimum of fourteen, move with the students. The academic stress of preparing for university is already challenging. There is a well-documented increase in mental health issues across all schools and programs. Being forced to move to a new school would add to the pressure upon these students and could negatively impact their academic success and their emotional well-being. The board accepts that they cannot plan before a decision. In truth, the board and the union could have a conversation focused on addressing the requirements of the IBO and on the needs of students. In fact, they must have this conversation prior to any decision to move the IB program in order to ensure the ability to meet the IBO requirements. Being definitive, in fact, is what the students deserve and nothing less. Additionally, from the board, quote, "Should less than fourteen current IB-trained Bateman staff move with the program, we have two years to train additional teachers. There are many IB-trained teachers in the board that are not at a site offering IB, as we have been training teachers for years, and teachers do move from school to school." Again, the board's response allows for too much variability in staffing the IB program. The board must commit to stability and consistency of existing staff for the IB program in order to meet the IBO requirements and maintain enhanced program delivery, with no student landing in the gap of teaching, training new teachers. If they can't commit to this, then the program should not be moved. Number seven, related to moving students. More emails from the board regarding student transition and continuation of the student experience. The board expects, quote, "Students would be moving with their immediate cohort to the new site. I don't see how numbers would fall below two-thirds just because of a change in location. We have a hundred and eighty students that travel from Milton to our Oakville IB site to access IB, so I really don't think the geographic location of the program is likely to deter committed IB students." This response does not, does not confirm the board's ability to eliminate the risk of fewer than two-thirds students moving. While Mr. Boge may not see how numbers would fall below two-thirds just because of a change in location, numerous students currently in grade-nine pre-IB have stated they would consider St. Thomas Aquinas or White Oaks. Additionally, I'd like to highlight the comment, "I don't really think the geographic location of the program is likely to deter committed IB students." In Director Miller's report, he indicates that hosting the IB program at Central, a school he perceives as centrally-located,
You have thirty seconds.
may increase numbers of interested students. The board seems unclear or uninformed about the role of the location of such a program plays. I would suggest that there are many factors that contribute to where students attend schools, not simply their commitment to a program. I don't doubt these students are committed. Transportation and other logistics are extremely important considerations. Students and their families understood the logistics required to attend Bateman when they enrolled. Should students be forced to move, getting from Bateman requires three city buses and thirty to fifty minutes, depending on time of day. At the Committee of the Whole, we heard the director say, "This will lead to unintended consequences. I respectfully ask you not to support the director's recommendation."
Are there any comments or questions for our presenters, from the trustees? Trustee Collier.
I'm curious about the responses that you received. You said that there was no clear plan about the grade-twelve students. Could you elaborate on that, please?
Well, I, I sent an email, and you have backup behind the IBO letter there. It's the communication. So I did ask specifically what would happen to those students who would be in grade twelve in 2019. I want to understand what happens to those students if, for some reason, the IBO does not approve the move because we don't have a commitment to the two-thirds teachers, two-thirds students. I didn't, I didn't receive an answer.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I would like to thank you, Christine, for coming out tonight, your delegation and perspective. I'd like to ask our next presenter to come up, Rory Nissen, who is a community member. Welcome, Rory.
Thank you very much. By the way, just a point of order. I'm here for Pearson High School, as well as being a community member.
Thank you.
Just to clarify. All right, good evening. And thank you to the trustees for offering these delegation nights. So the recommendation to close Pearson High School can be boiled down into a single argument. Pearson's enrollment is low and declining. By now, I'm sure you know why. You know that those students were taken away from Pearson and given to Hayden. You know that Pearson has one and a half feeder schools, while Hayden has seven. And that, absent the Hayden effect, Pearson's recent attendance would actually be stable. You may also know that, according to the board's own data, utilization in the north is projected to be eighty-eight percent in 2020, if Pearson stays open. That's just two percent shy of the board's target of ninety percent utilization. And that's before adding what is estimated to be well over two thousand new units to North Burlington, and also taking into account new families moving into the existing neighborhood. During the last Committee of the Whole, the administration, which frankly left out this important issue in its final report, dismissed the new growth as insignificant without providing any data. Now, isn't that the same attitude that got us into the Hayden mess in the first place? I recommend that you take this growth seriously. So with utilization projected to be eighty-eight percent in the north in 2020, and all of these new developments, it really does make you wonder, why are we closing Pearson? Seriously, why? The board administration has not sufficiently answered the question. They've also never provided a legitimate option for redistribution in the north. But, don't worry, we did it for them. We have sent you our clear, straightforward proposal. In summary, one, send Kilbride students back to Pearson, which is only two hundred meters further from Kilbride than Hayden. Two, give Pearson the Mere students and the rest of the CH Norton cohort. Three, send the Alton West Development and late French immersion students to MM Robinson. Finally, number four, properly distribute the other new developments to the schools that need students. Through this proposal, hundreds of new students will be added to MM and Pearson. And Hayden will be brought down to a sustainable utilization. That's all there is to it, folks. You can see all the data in the email that I sent you a couple of days ago. And here's an added bonus to this proposal. You don't need to worry about the severe risk of Hayden French immersion students switching to the English program to stay at Hayden. The board administration has provided no data related to this risk. They dismissed it. They have no mitigation strategy. They could have surveyed Hayden parents on this question, but they didn't. Perhaps they were worried about what the results of such a survey would show. I'm sorry, but when you're talking about closing a school, that's not good enough. Finally. Finally, I want to talk to you about our expectations for our elected leaders, our trustees, as the Halton community. And I apologize here, but I'm going to get a little bit philosophical. There's an ancient proverb, okay? It says, "To lead people, walk behind them." The community expects its leaders to hear their calls for caution. To keep a school open is a decision that can be changed in the future, but to close a school is irreversible. Permanent decisions require a higher level of consideration and a strong evidentiary basis. The fact is that a social license, okay, from the community is required for a decision of this magnitude. And that social license doesn't exist here. So as you head home tonight, thinking about the 25 delegations, everything that's transpired this evening, I'd like you to ask yourself two questions.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. First question, has the board met the burden of evidence for closing Pearson High School? Second question, are you prepared for your legacy as a board of trustees to be that you took a permanent decision to close a high school in a growing neighborhood? I cannot answer these questions for you, but I do know that, for the good of Burlington, you must not close Lester B. Pearson High School. Thank you.
I'd ask you to hold your applause, please. Thank you. You've been very good tonight. I'd like to thank you for your delegation. Is there any comments or questions from trustees? Seeing none, I'd like to thank you for coming out tonight, Rory, and for your delegation and perspective.
Thank you.
That is the conclusion of all of our delegations tonight. I would like to thank everyone who has come out tonight for sharing your perspective and your thoughts on this very difficult process. Trustees have heard and have listened, and we have read every email that you have sent us. We have heard via phone and by person, and we look forward to our next delegation evening on Thursday to hear from more community members. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Grevens, seconded by trustee Gray. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone, and good night.